Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
God, our Divine Spirit, we ask you to shine your light down upon our city, granting us the blessings to keep our city running in good order, to bless our residents, to bless everyone that works for the city, our police department, our fire department. We ask you to guide our council to make the proper decision for the highest good of our city. We ask you to bless our country. We thank thee. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Sal. Vice Mayor William Ditmer.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman Richard Bloom.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe. Let the record show that Councilman Rowe is absent. City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Moving on to item one, approval of the council minutes. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's move the comments to the general public. Mr. Brown?
Thomas Brown, seventy-four thirty-six Candlelight Court. For those of you that are not familiar with the illegal fence at seventy-four forty-seven Candlelight Court, it is the one that the city refuses to take any corrective action on. It is just south of the illegal no trespassing sign that the city put up, but refuses to take any action that would make the sign meet city code. I hope you all had a nicer Memorial Day weekend than we did. We had people from Germany, New York, and Georgia celebrating the holidays with us. We all went part of Friday, all of Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, without drinkable water from our faucets because of a water main leak. We were issued a boil water notice. The city was hit with a big expense because for several hours on Friday, four or five city trucks and six or seven city employees were on the scene of the water main leak. The leak was directly under the illegal fence facilitating digging on both sides and under the fence to get to the leak. I have asked for the fence to be moved twelve more feet from the center of the road to meet code, but that's not going to happen. At the May fourteenth city council meeting, the city manager announced that a previous city council CRA board improperly decided to use community redevelopment funds for dredging.
Not true.
What he failed to say is the current city council CRA board continued doing it. Months ago, Councilman Ditmer expressed some concerns about spending blight and slum elimination funds on dredging. Now that we can't use that slush fund, we are out of money for dredging. I sent a letter to the city manager asking if improper spending is illegal spending, but I have not received a response in my self-addressed stamped envelope. Thank you.
Sir.
I'm afraid I have to, I have to correct the record. I never said, nor do I believe I ever said, that dredging was an illegal activity. I was referring to my efforts to curtail the expenditures of CRA funds on salaries. I never said it was illegal. I said I believe it was improper, and I would have not gone in that direction. And since I've been here, I've continually, continually reduced the dependency on CRA funds being spent for personnel salaries. So that's what I spoke to. I never believe I used the words illegal. And the fund, the utilization of CRA funds for dredging is a proper activity, as was demonstrated several attorneys ago. I did not speak to dredging. I spoke to my efforts at reducing dependency on CRA from over sixty-three percent through my first budget year until now, when it's under twenty-something percent.
Leonard Lord.
Hello, Leonard Lord. I, Pastor eight-one-one-four, Beoket Avenue, Port Ritchie. Just want to tell you all it's that time of the year again, and some of you have been very gracious in times past. The city's got, really got behind us, but we'll be reaching out to provide two-hundred-and-fifty backpacks for the citizens of the area having a time of celebration, and hopefully the police department and the fire department can help again. So I just want to appreciate that. You can buy them stuff for under ten dollars apiece. So if any of you want to help with that, that'll be a blessing any way you want to. You want to help stuff, serve, give, that'll be good. It's just going back into the community. The other three points I want to make real briefly is that we understand through history that a family, a city, or nation divided can't stand. And oftentimes, in honoring one another above ourselves is what we're called to do, that we can get things done. Being here in the city for getting close to twenty years, I often see the present people blame the past people. Well, if they're blamed, then you'll be blamed one day. And so the first thing is to, how to esteem others more highly than ourselves and look what helps them and everybody. Secondly, is realizing there is an accuser. There is a being that is invisible that's called the devil, and he is called the accuser. So oftentimes, we accuse others. Unfortunately, when we do that, we take the hand of being the accuser instead of the intercessor. Excuse me, you probably know a famous person in the area named Dr. Gills. We had a meeting in his home promoting it. He says, Leonard, I want to tell you something. You're either one of two things. You're either an accuser or an intercessor. You're either blaming people for what they did wrong, and they're the problem, or you're praying that the Lord would help you. And so I don't do good at it all the time, but I want to pray that the Lord help us together to be one in the city, to do what's best. Thirdly, is the wisdom from above. We find out where there's envy and strife. It brings in confusion and every evil word. But it says God's wisdom from above is first pure. You're doing it out of pure heart. You're doing it for everybody, not for self. Says it's gentle, it's not pushing, it's willing to yield, to hear and counsel, and it's done in peace and an atmosphere that all can be brought in. So let's help ourselves in Port Ritchie to quit accusing the past and bringing it into the future, and let's just work together honoring one another. Okay? Lord bless you, and thank you for all you do. Thanks for serving. Lord bless you.
Thank you. David Mueller.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Mr. Mueller. Mr. Mueller. Address?
Oh, fifty-four thirty-nine Blue Point Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mayor, City Administration, and the rest of the council members for taking the opportunity to have this opportunity to speak. I appreciate you allowing the public to speak and to express their concerns. This serves as an active process for our residents to get involved and communicate their questions, interests, and concerns to the council and city administration in a timely manner. While I see the public comment as a very positive exercise, I feel it can be improved and moved to the next level in process improvement. I would ask that a process be proposed by this council to establish formal control and follow-up for each of the questions and issues raised at this meeting, and if not explicitly answered at this time due to research on the matter, log it, and be placed on agenda as old business to bring forward that answer at the next meeting. This could be something very simple as listing the name, the dates, the question asked, and the reply provided, and the date completed. This will allow for accountability and closure with our residents' concerns and enable a tracking process to ensure unresolved matters do not fall through the gaps. It will provide metrics and a source of resolution outcome for future community concerns. In addition, as I walk through these neighborhoods, and I do this on a regular basis, I make it a point to talk to people and see where their temperatures are. Some of the issues that I've encountered, and I'm expressing that to you as potential follow-up items. One gentleman expressed a concern to have the walking trail extended into the park from Old Post Road. Another opportunity was to utilize the monthly water bills to advertise community events, something like the Fourth of July event that we're having down at the waterfront park. And then thirdly is we can promote community awareness through the CAC by potentially establishing block captains for each street to aid in communicating with one another and help bringing this city back together. I stand in agreement with this man right here, and I also pray for this city on a daily basis. And I pray for the wisdom of Solomon on each and every one of you, because we're all in this together, and we want positive outcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, in view of the comments you just made, maybe I can help with three of the questions that you just raised and answer them now. You spoke about, an individual asked you about the extension of the bike and hike path on Old Post into the state park. I've met with the state, I'm continuing to meet with the state in the form of Adam Belton, the director of that park. That was an effort brought by several other council people, and we're still working on it. There are several major issues on the state's part with the ability to extend our bike and hike path into that property. With respect to the water bills, we are in fact attempting to do exactly what that person requested, and that is on the new form that will be coming out when we transfer water bills to the new system, there will be a specific space where we can put special items and interesting notes in there. So that in fact will occur shortly. And with respect to your recommendation to the CAC, I'll certainly pass that information on to the chairperson of the CAC, so she can form that under her committee. I hope I've answered your questions in a timely manner.
Matt Todd. And Matt, before you get started, Ms. Wimpy does have to be here to yield time, just so you know.
That's fine. Mr. Mayor, Council, I want to thank you and the residents for having my time to say what I like to say. Matthew Todd, eighty-three oh-one Congress. I'd like to see a smile on the council people's face. I think you guys have done a remarkable job over the years of what we had, and this ain't a blame game. These are facts. You guys accomplished fixing the water. Any resident that would like to see these photos can come to eighty-three oh-one Congress. I got previous council meetings and everything that they can watch and facts, facts. You just took a water department that was in the red, and look what you've done to it. You got four million dollars sitting in surplus, previous council. This ain't a blame game. It's a fact. You guys accomplished that. I applaud you for that. Every single one of you sitting up there, you ought to hold your head up high. We did not have dredging. We did not have a DMA site tool. You ladies and gentlemen made it happen. The thing of it is, I can't thank you enough. I'm tired of seeing the criticism. I might not agree with you on everything, but it's time to move the city forward. We don't need to go back to where we once were. The thing of it is, I would like to see a little more transparency out of, and this is all due respects, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to see a little more transparency. The residents need to know how disarrayed this city was financially, and you guys are still digging out of it, and the council's sitting here tried to, is trying to dig us out, and you're trying to dig us out, and they don't understand that. They want projects done, and there's no money there from what happened to the CRA fund. Look how many years ago, how many millions of dollars that was in the CRA funds and are depleted from previous council. This ain't the blame game. This is facts. So when you're making them decisions, keep making the decisions that you are. You're moving it in and forward. I voted for every one of you, and I'm proud that I did, and that's a fact. You know, I might not agree with everything, and I might come up and, you know, poke at you a little bit. It's nothing personal. You know, I want better for the city, but we're watching our homes. This flooding and dredging needs to be done. Because what's happening is people are getting ready to lose their homes, and they don't see it's coming. When these insurance rates go skyrocket, you got two places to go with insurance. Citizens and FEMA. FEMA's the only one that gives you flood insurance. If these channels ain't dredged, and this water runs up, and them surges come up, and they push the water back up into the channels, what happens? It floods the streets up. And I understand some people that don't live on the water, don't want the dredging. I can understand it, and I can relate, but somewhere along the line, we're going to have to make some kind of exception and make it happen, because it's going to affect all of us, and then we're going to have all these empty homes sitting down, and the city will go bankrupt. It really will. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Let's move on from comments from the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. I listened to a lot of what Mr. Todd has said, and I would like to just read this piece of email that we just received. It's important to all of our citizens. It's something that I have always attempted to do, and that is to work to continue to keep our flood insurance rates as low as possible. And to that end, we just received a letter. "Congratulations. I have received and reviewed your CRS recent submittal and found everything to be in order. Your community remains in good standing with the CRS program." That has a direct result, the work that we've been doing, and it's a direct benefit to every single citizen who owns a piece of property, residential or business. It affects your insurance rates, and our work is keeping those rates low. With respect to something else that Mr. Todd said, and with respect to our water operation, it continues to be outstanding. We continue to provide excellent water at an extremely advantageous cost to the city and to the residents. Our charts are just, I don't know how they can be much better, until we get well number seven online, and that will be shortly. It's being transferred from a monitoring well to a production well, which I've stated earlier, will give us many different opportunities with respect to not only production of water, but also the resting of our wells. And now this is something I usually do later on, but I think it's important that we do it now, because these are the questions that are being answered or raised, and these are the questions, the answers to many of those questions. And this is our monthly report for the month of May, and it has six different categories. There will be a separate report, by the way, as requested by Councilwoman Sorrell from each of the department. We'll be starting with the police department a little bit later on, after I'm done. This is the general projects update. It looks something like this, and I'll read it out. "Under administrative departments, with respect to the Restore Act, the judging of channels one eighteen and twenty-six A, and with respect to the Restore Act and our DEP requirements. As projects, we continue to discuss what is required with the county. In fact, I just met with the county administrator last Friday concerning these issues, in particular concerning our dredging issues. We continue to have excellent relationships with the county, and Mr. Bowles fully understands our position and has been more than willing to help and work with us. We have rate studies for both our utilities and our building fees, which are extremely important, both on the income and outflow side. And we are beginning, it is a work in progress, we're working with our finance department to begin that rate analysis, which is really quite important, particularly to the general setting of our tax rates. And in particular, we have worked to maintain a low millage, and part and parcel of that is how we earn money and how we spend money. And that's part and parcel of the rate study. With respect to Orange Grove Avenue, we've completed the negotiations and have transferred the property to the county. And later on in the public works section, I'll get down and read to you, that work on Orange Grove Avenue reconstruction is scheduled for July twenty-sixth, 2019. We asked for specific dates, and that is a specific date. The project manager for the county doing that work on Orange Grove hopes to begin prior to that date, but that's his outside date, July twenty-sixth, 2019. So the people from Candlelight Court should take heart that we are finally going to get it done after a long, a bit of personal and negotiations with the county. We've, just recently, as many of you will recall, undergone a complete recodification of the city code. That has been completed. We've increased the use of our NICSIL system for outgoing message. That still continues to be an ongoing. Right now, our fiscal department is deep into working on our upcoming budget for the budget workshops, which is where the rubber really hits the road and where our council decides what is the best way to use your tax money to accomplish the goals that you give them and relate to us. It all is part and parcel of the budget process. With respect to the building department and the beautification of US nineteen and the median that we've all talked about, we've been deeply involved in that project. It is now the contract, was approved at the last council meeting, and the mayor will be signing that contract so that we can finally begin the beautification of US nineteen. Now, there's other questions that were asked earlier. CRA Residential Maintenance Grant Program, other questions asked earlier. We have nineteen, we have completed, in the process, we have nineteen applications. I believe eight of them are below the median level, the one thousand, for the one-thousand-dollar grant, and the remainder above that. Looking at that grant program, I'll be coming to council during the budget workshop to potentially alter those limits and perhaps raise the amount that's involved in the grant. That'll be a decision made by this council sometime during their budget workshops. Avila Bay Construction, which is at the, towards the end of Old Post, out towards the park entrance, is still undergoing construction, and their demonstration properties are open for people to come and view. Kaiser University. Kaiser University is in their due diligence, and beyond that, in their planning stages, that is an in-progress project. Kaiser University will, if all things continue as they are now, will relocate and construct, have constructed a facility at the corner of Grand and Nineteen on what was the old vacated trailer park. So that is a work in progress, and will be coming to council for council's decisions and recommendations after this project goes through the due diligence and through our own resources. So that's another event that's quite important for the city in general in many different aspects. We've been updating the commercial codes for improved enforcement, and that is being codified. Utilities Department, we continue to do a decreased reliance on the bulk water purchase. That is an ongoing project, and in my opinion, will never end. We have a contract to purchase water, and that is a mandatory issue for us, because if, God forbid, there is an emergency, we can buy water, purchase water to continue providing water until the repairs are made. As was stated by Mr. Brown, things break. And when they break, we get there as quickly as possible and repair them as quickly as possible for many, many reasons. So we are going to maintain that contract in order to purchase bulk water. That'll eventually come back for council. We continue to improve our water recovery operation. Again, that's an ongoing, never-ending process, and that's how we get the kind of charts that we get now, because we continue to be very careful about how we get the water, how we filter that water, how do we utilize that water, and how we save as much of that water as we possibly can. We've purchased a utility modular office. The old structure was falling down. That's been completed, and it has been installed and is fully up, running, and operational. And our public works and utilities people use it every day. We have been upgrading our meters, our SCADA meters. These are the meters that tell us the flow, how the different lift stations are working on a daily basis. We used to have to go out there and manually read the meters so we can make determinations. We're moving away from that old archaic system to a modern, computerized system that's called the SCADA system, that relays the information back to us so we can know when we have specific problems. I'm pleased to say that almost all of the city stations are now fully SCADA functioning. Certification of well number seven, as I spoke to you earlier. That's the completion date that we believe will occur specifically is September thirty, 2019. And as I stated earlier, with that well coming online, it gives us many different opportunities, many different possibilities, and I'll be bringing those back to council for council's awareness and council's aid in making decisions. The potential upgrade to Pasco Way Lift Station, that's part of discussion, and part of that discussion has to do with the potentiality of Kaiser University relocating or constructing at that site. Any, any individual corporation who intends to do construction to build something in our community, there is almost a, not almost, there is a requirement on them that they pick up the costs for improvements to the system so that it doesn't reflect back on your taxes that we have to pay for them coming here. And that upgrade will be part and parcel of the workings of Kaiser University coming here. With respect to our fire department, the repairs to engine number forty-two have been completed. We've been awarded a vessel grant for the acquisition of a fire police vessel. Our water rescue and rapid diver trainings have been completed. Our wildland fire training has been completed. We received a grant from the Firehouse Sub Company to purchase that vessel. It was a very significant grant, allowing us to actually purchase that boat. We are now awaiting the delivery of that vessel. Our police department, with respect, we've updated two new patrol cars, and they're currently being fitted. We should have them online shortly. They're here, they're ours, they're coming online shortly. We've completed our update of weapons acquisitions. Our training initiative is ongoing with respect to all forms of training in order to keep our police officers up and current in both their licensures and both their ability to protect and serve this community. We've been, the police department has been collaborating with both Pasco County and the drug and code enforcement activities. That's an ongoing activity, as all of you know, and it will be for the foreseeable future until the good Lord gives us a way to reduce drug future until the good Lord gives us a way to reduce drug dependency in this country. And then, of course, I continue to receive on a daily basis, updates from our sergeants who provide a report directly to the captain and the chief and to me concerning all activities in this city. It is a detailed report that tells me what our police are doing, how they respond, how often they respond, and, in my opinion, how well they respond. The chief will speak to that in a little while. With respect to public works, the FERDA improvements to the waterfront park, that is a continuing project. We continue to talk with the waterfront, with the FERDA people. The improvements to Brasher Park have been completed. If you go out to Brasher Park and take, I would, I would please ask you to go out to Brasher Park, take a ride around Brasher Park. The view is phenomenal. We've been out there, it's been cleaned, the mangroves have been properly trimmed by licensed mangrove trimmers. It is really an enjoyable location. The rehabilitation of Nick's Park Boat Ramp is continuing, it's ongoing. There's some issues that we're still trying to resolve with respect to that boat ramp, as is the new sidewalk installations. We're attempting to put in new sidewalks, and that's still pending. Washington Street repairs, that is on this budget tonight. It's absolutely a magnificent effort by your employees to address a significant problem, a cost problem, that, that because of their efforts will be a dramatic reduction in what the cost could have been as to what they will be if council approves that function tonight. And that concerns the repair to Washington Street and the phenomenal dip that's been there we've been trying to address. But the facts of the matter is, we would not have been able to afford that if the bids came in in excess of $500,000. This council, with our recommendation, voided that bid, and we renegotiated a bid below the original estimate of the project. It's actually a great, a great success story for, for the city. We continue, we continue on, and this is an ongoing project, it continues every, every possible month, every possible week, and particularly now that the hurricane season is upon us, and that's the repairs to the water storm drainage system. And that has to do with every swell in this city. We start from one end and we go all the way through every single swell to make sure that they are up, running, clear and clean in advance of hopefully a negative hurricane We continue to coordinate the required modifications over at Avila Bay. Avila Bay Construction is just not simply the, as I spoke to you earlier, go out there and build their buildings. There was quite a bit of infrastructure that they had to put in to augment our system in order to accept what they were going to do at no cost to the city, at no financial burden to the city. That was part and parcel of the agreements that was worked out with them. That's still an ongoing process. As I stated earlier, the Orange Grove Avenue reconstruction is scheduled to begin on July 26, 2019, or sooner. The bike and hike extension, I just spoke to that earlier when a question was raised. I'm in discussions, I continue to be in discussions with the state concerning the ability to get over to our, that park entrance and to move into that park. My last meeting was with Mr. Adam Beldon, and I will continue to meet with him and help. Hopefully, we can resolve some of those issues. Now, with respect to the bike and hike as it goes, the underpass, as you recall, we started this process some time ago. We did our own analysis. We were prepared to move forward on our own, but what has occurred was that now the county, the City of Newport Ritchie, and this city, with the assistance and the blessing of the city council, has formed a three-party agreement where we are having, will be conducting the meetings to do a further update and analysis of the possibility, potentiality and costs involved in the construction of a underpass underneath, underpass including a bike and hike underneath the bridge at 19. And those meetings have occurred, are occurring in May and will be occurring throughout June, and we will bring further reports to you when we meet with those individuals. So, you can be updated on that progress of that, that project. It affects both sides of the community, both sides of 19, and will have a meaningful effect if and when it is ever completed. We've completed the refurbishment, I'm sure if you've gone out to the waterfront park of the bathroom facilities at the waterfront park. I believe everyone who was visiting, visited them has believed it was, it was a pretty, pretty good success. And if you take a look around, you will note that, that, that the waterfront park also has had its mangroves and brushes addressed. You can go out there now, sit on those benches, you can look, you can see the many plants that was put in there, the work that was done in order to facilitate that, some of that requirements from the state. But we, we finally got the park looking pretty, pretty nice, and I invite everyone to go out there and enjoy that facility, as I'm sure you will come July 6 for the fireworks event. So, all of those mangroves and shrubblings have been, have been trimmed. The dog enjoyment center will, will be completed no later than June 5 of this, of 2019. That's only what, about a week and ten, a week or so away. And after that, giving conditions, the kitty park is, is scheduled to begin construction on June 17, 2019. And that city council and general public and citizens is the report on the projects of this city administration.
I was wondering, Mr. Lupo, in the future, when we have these type of report lists, the water, can we do a, like a PowerPoint so that they can follow along a little bit easier than what we have in front of us?
Absolutely. Not a problem whatsoever. And with that, I've taken up quite a bit of your time, but I would like to have our police chief, well, before I deal with the police chief, I would like to, with his indulgence, give you some quick statistics about the fire department and some other good news coming from the fire department. The fire department, total calls have been 107 calls from the fire department. Seventy-two of those calls were medical assistance calls. Nine of them involved motor vehicle crashes. Nine of them involved assistance with the police department. Eight of them actually involve fire alarms. Two illegal burns were cited. Two were children locked in a vehicle responses. Critical. Two of them were because of storm damage, when it had winds come through here not too long ago. They completed one water rescue. They addressed a lines down issue, and they did an animal rescue. And they've completed phase two of the smoke alarm program, and we've installed 56 alarms since the beginning of the program. Free, no cost to any of the citizens who call and ask for them. It's phenomenal work by our fire department. And of course, they completed their special NFPA ladder testing program, and we've ordered the fire boat from Rescue One. That's the boat that, that we're going to purchase through the grant that we, that the fire department, this city, received through their good efforts. And if that isn't enough, our fire department and the city has been awarded, the fire department has been granted a hero's grant from the Florida Department of Health, and what it means is that it will, that the state will provide free Narcan, free Narcan to our fire department for our utilization. And they have used this, they've used over six doses since March. So, this is an important life-saving capability for our department, fire department. And in fact, the chief and, and all of us are very, very proud of what the fire department has accomplished. Now, chief.
Well, thanks. You want to do the police report, too? It'd be a lot easier. But just to jump on that, the, yeah, Captain Tom Quinn and his crew are amazing at getting these, these grants. The Firehouse sub grant totals about $38,000 for a boat. The boat's been ordered, it's in manufacture now, and we expect it, whenever, whenever we, I know we're going to go up and get it, there's going to probably be a parade of guys going up to go to get it when it's time to be delivered. Along with the American Red Cross that you mentioned, several months back, we teamed up with the American Red Cross and started the installation of these fire smoke detectors, which are completely free to the residents. Now, American Red Cross was here last month to give the fire department and the city an award. The, it was one of the quickest saves recorded in the history of these free giveaways. On Clover, earlier in the afternoon, the alarm was installed, and at 2:00 in the morning, the alarm went off and saved two gentlemen that were living in the, in the mobile home. When I got there, the, at 2:00 in the morning, the alarm had completely melted off the wall, but if it had not been installed, we probably would have had two fatalities. The fire marshal, state fire marshal was out there, nothing suspicious, but the award from the American Red Cross was the quickest life-saving award in, in the history, less than 24 hours. Along with that, I want to just take an opportunity that, now that I have, it's my turn, to thank Terry and Gloria White. The Whites own a house over on 8,000 Brighton, and they, they were, it's been knocked down so that they could build up a new one, but during the time that they were planning the demolition, they allowed us to use the house for training. Our fire department came out along with Pasco County Fire Rescue, and they trained in it for several nights. Our police department, Port Ritchie Police Department and the Pasco County Sheriff's Office trained in it. The SWAT team came out there, and the training, and the, actual training as opposed to a tabletop or a video training, and an actual building is priceless. So, I just want to thank them for allowing us to train in that house. The SWAT team and the sheriff's office in Pasco County were, were really overwhelmed that we invited them out for that, and I want to thank them. The boat activity, we had a, we had a combined effort with FWC, which is Fish and Wildlife, along with the United States Coast Guard. It was May 11. I know that we get some complaints about activity underwater. We address it as quickly as we can with manpower that we have available. But they stopped 48 vessels, they issued 24 marine warnings, issued nine citations. BUI arrests were three. BUI investigations were seven. A group of violation, I don't know what that group it did, but it was a group of violations. Somebody must have out of season or, and one marine life rescue, and then three ordinance violations. So, it was a combined effort to keep the waters safe around the city of Port Ritchie. That worked out real well. Our total calls for service in April were 1,157 calls. We were out at Walmart 49 times, Whiskey Joe's, that varies, we were only out there once. Abigail Court Apartments seems to be steady four or five calls a month. We, we, we had one residential burglary and three conveyance, which is a vehicle, which would be a vehicle. The retail thefts were four, the petty thefts were one, grand thefts were two. Traffic crashes, we responded to 27 traffic crashes. The officers did 389 traffic stops, which resulted in 27 impounded vehicles. The alarms were 30, the drug violations 14, and noise complaints were eight. So, that's, that's it.
Once again, a question on noise violations.
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that. I don't have a list of it broken down.
Business or residential is what?
Some of the, actually, the noise complaints last month, they were more residential than they were business. Yeah. So, I, I can get that. We're in the process of switching out this whole computer RMS system, and once the new system's put in place, I'll be able to break it down a lot better for you.
I would, thank you, chief. I would like to ensure the council understands and that the citizens understand that these are the kind of reports that you, we've just delivered, that you're going to be receiving at just about every possible council meeting so that we can be open, transparent and responsive to the needs of the citizens as they relate it to us and to their council representatives. And I thank you for your forbearance, and this is the way we're going to proceed from this point on.
All right. Looking for any comments from council? Mr. Bloom?
Kenny?
Go ahead.
You know, the, the topic of the CRA fund has been mentioned frequently.
Yes, sir.
And I guess I gather that in, in the past, there was, there was considerably more money than there is now, but what, what I'm concerned about, or not so much concerned, is what happens when the CRA, when there is no more CRA money? Is it, first of all, is that possible?
Yeah, of course it's possible that there, there can be in the future no CRA funds.
Okay. So, so what would happen where the CRA money is being spent for different items, projects, or whatever it's being spent for? Those same things need to be funded. Where will that money come from if there's no more CRA money is what I'm trying to find there?
Councilman Bloom, the CRA funds are allocated by the CRA committee, which is this, the group of seated council people. We come to both the city council and the CRA during the budget process. Over the years, various administrations came to city council and requested approval of, of certain functions or were, or the CRA, or council CRA requested certain activities be undertaken utilizing CRA funds. All those decisions are made during each budget process. Over the years, various administrations, various councils have given instructions to the administration to accomplish specific goals or projects that they deemed lawful and necessary by virtue of citizen request, activities, whatever. So, so funds were allocated and dispersed at the end of each year. They had your general bookkeeping, analysis, reviews. Following year comes up, CRA committee says, administration, during the budget process or prior to the budget process, we would like these certain activities accomplished. Do you have the funds? Here's, here's the budget, here's what the money is, here's how you can allocate it. If you wish to keep some in reserve, you keep some in reserve. Those decisions are made by the CRA and during the budget process. Over the years, over the years, various activities, various projects were undertaken by this city, and funds were, were utilized to accomplish the goals and objectives of whatever those activities and projects were. Part and parcel of the operation of the CRA is exactly that, the administration, operation of that CRA. And allowances can be made to offset the salary involved of employees for the activities involved in CRA. So, over the years, come budget time, budgets came before CRA, including where the funds would be spent, from which account, and those decisions were made, passed and approved, and that's what occurred. Upon arriving here, I, I made a determination and felt that there was an undue burden upon the CRA for the expen- for the, in my opinion, for the expenditures of salary line items. And I have continually reduced that dependency from when I arrived here at approximately 63% of the salaries funding for CRA, down to somewhere in the low twenties, and I hope to reduce it again further this year to well below the current standards. But sooner or later, the CRA funding may end. Currently, we have an on-the-books liability of $666,000, more or less, because we have to pay for, initially, for the dredgings of Channel 1, 18, and 26A upfront. This was part of the million-dollar grant, so to speak, grant. Actually, it was a two-thirds, one-third grant. The city has already expended its CRA funds with respect to the purchase of the DMMA site, the construction of the DMMA site, and the dredging of Channel 19 to allow further dredging, to allow for the dredging spoils to go to that site. So that essentially ate up the one-third that we already paid from the CRA funds for that project. We have, we must by law, we kept in reserve the $666,000, which was the estimated cost for the dredgings of 1, 26A, and 18. So we have to put that money out first, that's why we have to have it. Put the money out first, and then after it's approved, be reimbursed. So when those funds come back, coupled with whatever CRA funds we've been able to save, we can then, we council, can then make the decision to move forward with another project if they so choose. Any list of about that long of projects eligible for activities utilizing CRA funds, including dredging. So that is about the general picture of the utilization of CRA funds. When will the funds end? I believe, what, about two years, Jocelyn, is that up? Still up for grabs? So it's still up. It could be two years, three years, four years, five years. At some point in time, it will end, sir.
It's about six or seven.
Six or seven, okay.
Yeah, I looked it up.
Okay, so, I mean, that was one hell of an answer. That's all I got to say. But I was just looking for something very simple. When the CRA goes at some point in time.
Yes, sir.
Will you be able to fund whatever you were funding from the CRA through some other fund that's available?
We would then shift many of that burden to what is known as ad lorm taxes. You, council, will then make a decision as to how best utilize the income that we'll be receiving to accomplish the desires of the citizens brought to you. So, yes, the city will be able to continue to do projects that it deems necessary within its tax structure. One of my goals, always has been, always will be, to try and conserve as much funds as possible and to work out budgets so that we do not have to increase millage. That may not be possible in the future. It has been in the past because of the utilization and various mechanisms of CRA funds. So you will be able to do projects, but those projects will be at the citizens and your choosing.
From another fund, for instance, the ad lorm.
It'll be, it'll come from all the different sources of income that we have other than those specially allocated, like utilities, which is a different kind of fund. They'll be coming from pennies from Pasco, those kinds of places.
All right, I thank you for that. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, sir.
Trying to be open. Ms. Sorrell?
Okay. For those of the people that don't know, our police and fire department have their own Facebook page. And you can check out and see what our guys are doing to guard our city and protect our city. It includes their training, it includes their projects that they've got going on. You really need to check them out when you get a chance.
And I also want to do, thank staff. Mr. Lupo kind of did that on the Washington Street. I know what kind of effort went into getting that piggybacked with the city of Largo. And so, thank you all very much for all that work. Move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This will be the second reading of ordinance 19-668. Jim?
This is the marine issue regarding the WOD. This will be the second and final reading by title only of ordinance number 19-668. An amendment to the city of Port Ritchie, Florida Land Development Code, Chapter 22-55E, amending 22-55E to separability, inclusion code and effective date. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the second reading ordinance 19-668 regarding the changes to the waterfront overlay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Police Department impound surplus.
For city council consideration, is a list of impounded vehicles currently in the police department's storage facility that are ready to be deemed surplus. These vehicles are currently damaged, out of service, or otherwise unusable to the city. The vehicles will be offered for sale at a public auction through Tampa Machinery Auction. Requested motion to approve the list of vehicles from the police department as surplus property and offered for sale through the Tampa Machinery Auction.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of the exterior painting of the water facility, plant facility?
For city council consideration, is the exterior painting of the city's three water storage tanks, the administration office, and well two, chlorination building by Five Star Painting. The city obtained three price quotes for the work and recommended Five Star Painting as the vendor for this project. The city has utilized this service of Five Star Painting in the past to paint City Hall and was satisfied with the quality of their service. A motion to...
You'll need to unlock your iPhone first.
Hello, I thought it's on. I apologize. It says off. Go figure. Request a motion to approve Five Star Painting as the vendor to complete the exterior painting work on the water plant.
What were the figures for the bid?
Yes, sir. The lowest bidder was Five Star Painting, $10,450. The second one was Certa Pro Painters, $10,795. And then third was Team Farrell for $34,638. We're recommending the low bidder.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we get to use utility funds, Richard?
Utility funds.
The payment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next is for consideration of the contract award for the Washington Street paving.
As city council recall, the city has a pavement settlement on Washington Street that is in need of repair. In early 2018, the city worked with Florida Design Consultants to prepare plans and specifications for this repair work. The budget on this project work was estimated at $250,000. The project was advertised through a public bid process with bids due on December 14th, 2018. The city received no bids for this project at that time. The project was advertised a second time through a public bid process with a bid due of February 22nd, 2019. The city received two bids at that time, and they far exceeded the city's projected budget. I believe someone's about $500,000. City council voted to reject the bids on April 23rd, 2019, at that city council meeting, and allowed the city to seek alternative pricing to help reduce the cost of the project. The city has obtained a price quote in the amount of $125,181.25 from asphalt paving systems to repair Washington Street through piggyback contract pricing with the city of Largo. And there's all of about two inches or more of documentation that goes along with that. And essentially, what that means is staff, Ms. Martinez in particular, worked diligently to find an alternative, and we have presented to council a project that can be completed at almost half of what was allocated, in the amount of $125,181.25. The action we request is a motion to award to asphalt paving systems the Washington Street pavement settlement project in the amount of $125,181.25.
Right, thank you. So we are looking for a motion to award to asphalt paving in Washington Street.
Motion to award contract to asphalt paving systems for the Washington Street pavement settlement project in the amount of $125,181.25.
Is this the property, is this paving part of the property exchange you did with?
No, sir.
That was different, that was...
That was orange roof. Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Next is the consideration for a dredging workshop. I asked Mr. Lupo to put this on. We have a lot of people with a lot of ideas, what can and can't be done. I thought the best way to do it is to get with our city and our team, to put forth what we can do as a city. And at that point, we can also have the county come to our meeting and tell us what they can and cannot do for us on the dredging. This way, everything will be on the table, nobody has to guess what's going on from where. So I would want to look for down the line, probably, I'd say right after the election might be good. We have a seated mayor here. We can get that workshop together, move forward, and everybody will be on the same page with dredging. So that's just what I wanted to put out. My motion would be to have the workshop after the election. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to have a workshop after the mayor election for the consideration of dredging.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Can we set a date?
First meeting after, when's it?
Be the 25th.
Meeting for the 25th?
June the 25th.
June 25th?
Give us time to get the county and everybody involved with that?
We'll do every effort to try and get the people involved. If not, it'll be first meeting in August, June, July.
No, July.
July. I missed a month.
Would that be before the council meeting?
As a workshop, it has to be.
Prior. All right. The last item on the agenda, looking for nominees to fill the vacant seat. We have one meeting left to go. Do we have anybody who would like to put forth a nominee?
I'll put forth one. Joe Parisi.
Do we have a second for Mr. Parisi? No second? Ms. Sorrell, old business?
Do we have a date when we're going to have the new dispatch finished with the county yet?
No, not yet. We had a conference call last Thursday with the people in California, the county IT people. But it's a work in progress, we're shooting for maybe August.
Okay. Okay, at the last meeting, I had asked to see whether or not we had any kind of legal reference for the number of pets in a home. And at this present time, there isn't any in our code, and there's not one in Pasco County. We do have codes that will cover nuisance animals, so we do have coverage for that sort of thing. So at this time, unless we want to look at it in the future in reference to our code, then I think that we're going to go ahead and let this one lapse. That's all I've got.
All right, and it's my fault, I overlooked, a couple of people wanted to ask some questions about the dredging workshop. Does anybody still need to ask any questions, or were they answered? David?
Dave Mueller, 5439. Appreciate all of your interest toward this. Sounds like we had $125,000 just surface as a surplus.
I'm sorry, sir?
As a result of the $250,000 that was allocated for the paving. Now you got a contract for $125,000. Seems like you have a favorable variance of $125,000.
On that particular project, yes, sir.
My recommendation would be, why don't we start trying to earmark some funds to do these maintenance dredges that have been overlooked for years and years and years, and push it toward that as a starting point. As an overrun in this year's budget that was an oversight, let's try to put some foot forward so we can move ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I wish it were that easy. Fund allocations come from specific places and specific entities. The funds allocated for the Washington Street projects are not the funds that can be utilized for dredging.
Well, I agree that there is a particular...
What fund, what fund are they coming from?
CRA.
CRA funds. I'm sorry, I apologize. CRA funds, council can decide what, the CRA can decide what it can do with it later on.
And also, to the extent that you've mentioned the enterprise fund, the utility fund.
Yes, sir.
And differentiation between that and the general fund.
Yes, sir.
There is maintenance attached to my water bill every month for...
Yes, sir.
Blood, stormwater. Is that part of the utility fund? And if so, can that be utilized, any amounts in the utility fund be utilized to offset some of these dredging concerns with regard to maintenance dredging?
No, sir. They're entirely different issues.
And that's, and that's an opinion from our certified public accountants?
We can get one, but we're...
I'm just asking the question. It sounds like it's a source, it's connected. I'm trying to connect dots here, and if there's an opportunity, I'd like to walk through the door.
We'll get, we'll have a specific answer for you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Looking for a vote? Help, Pat?
It's...
Wait a second. Sorry.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. On the dredging, does the workshop have to be in front of a council meeting? Can it be on a separate evening, because it could be lengthy?
Workshops have generally been held prior to a scheduled meeting for several reasons. One, it is earlier than the normal time, so the people can get here. And it's because it's on a regular scheduled basis that they know the meetings are going to be on either the second or fourth Tuesday of the month. On special occasions, council may, at its own discretion, call for special workshops at some other time. Location will always be here unless it is a very, very specific kind of workshop, like a planning group effort that was held maybe 20 years ago when we were putting together the WOD. But workshops are generally scheduled so that everyone knows when, where, and how. But they are really at the discretion of the city council.
Because it seems to me like this is a big enough issue that would warrant more than an hour's time or an hour and a half's time between the public and the officials who would be discussing all the different changes.
And if I may, Mayor--
Go ahead.
I, I don't think there's anything that says we have to complete a workshop in one session.
No, that's, I was just gonna say the same thing.
So we can have multiple workshops, because this is a pretty big issue.
Yeah.
So there's your, you can get much more time that way.
And, and aside from that, something I wanted to say earlier, but then forgot to sign up. When you're talking about our water department, our water and sewer--
I'm sorry?
The water and sewer department?
Yes.
In my side of the highway over here, the water and sewer lines were replaced in mid-eighties when they put, well, when they installed the new sewer lines. And we have had, over the last few years, some major water main breaks. When is it scheduled to refurb all the infrastructure? I know it's got to be done a piece at a time, but-- Is that something to talk about at the next meeting?
No, that's something that, that comes about in budget time. We generally set aside funds as best as possible to, to repair lines. The, the, the numbers that you're talking about really have seven figures attached to them. If you're talking about a major overhaul of the entire operations. We've, we've undergone a lot of that just to be able to bring the quality of water that we have now. Prior administrations, at one point in time, have dual lines out there, one for a different scheme and project that went south. But that's a function that, that council will have to take a look at during the budget process.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
I believe you got to get the county in here. I am an engineer, and you're looking at eight million dollars at the minimum to do the dredging here. And the residents here, eight to ten million dollars, and you're looking on the minimum side, okay? I'm willing to, you know, I guess this probably ain't legal, but I'm willing to lease my dredging equipment to the city for one dollar. I want the tax write-off. That's all I want. I would give that to the residents, if that's something that can be done. The residents deserve the dredging, the residents pay the taxes, they want to access these boats. And I think when you address the problem with the dredging, the previous, and this ain't a, this, these are facts, these ain't blame games. Previous council years ago took a cash cow that you had, the boat ramp that you could charge boats, and they got a grant to build a boat ramp, and now you can't use the mon, get the money out of it. So you need to find another source to collect some money. But you need to reach out and ask the county to, to assist this, and they're willing to do this, to be able to afford this, because you got twenty, less than twenty-eight hundred residents. Do the math. You raise the millet rates, you're gonna have to really skyrocket these millet rates. And then what's gonna happen? You're gonna push these residents out of their homes. Because when they're financing their homes, I'm not in that position. I own everything, I have no debt. I'm not boasting and bragging. But it's like this here, some people are, are in a different situation where they financed their homes. And when they did, their payment was structured in with their escrow for their insurance, their taxes and all that. You've got to take that into consideration for the people that are on fixed incomes. But the city deserves better. You need to reach out to the county and ask the county. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.